Yeah, then you could sit in our house and watch curtain views. And we did all the insulation last year. Windbreaker, you know, but it was just a big old barn out there. Shifted some time in the year. These doors wouldn't have been open.
She told you something.
I had a brick, it was like that. We heated with two coalstones.
Oh, we had like a burner, a wood stove in the center of the house, and a pellet stove in the big family room. Because we had a family room with the great ceiling, you know, with the log fans.
Okay, we're live, we're good.
It was good.
So we're gonna start this select board meeting, then we're gonna be... Point one three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Welcome to the... So we're gonna open the board of the session meeting first. And we have a supplemental. It's uh Jackie from the LMS. Okay, while we're waiting for that, we'll close out the session meeting temporarily, go to the select board meeting and make a motion to sign the warrants.
For who?
Second.
Okay, Rachel and Nancy.
And we are.
Rachel and Nancy.
And while the warrant's making its way around, motion for the minutes of February first, select board meeting as written.
Oh, second that.
All in favor? All right.
Jackie, I'm gonna end the meeting and start it again. We're gonna get on James and things like that.
He did the second, didn't he? Oh, she told me. I did. Or Jason did, I'm sorry.
Very good.
Jason. Okay, sorry. 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 I had to do her notes too. There you go.
Here we go. We got it. We got it, we're good.
Okay, so we'll make, we'll close out the select board meeting, reopen the session meeting. Hi Jackie. Can you hear us? Can you hear us Jackie? Obviously not.
Ooh, that sounded good. No, we can't hear you.
I don't think she can hear us.
She may be on mute.
I just miked him, she just looked like, can you hear me? You know?
Oh.
Can you hear me?
Nope.
Nope.
How much is signed?
Jackie, uh, you can call me.
He's gonna go get a poster board.
Yeah, speakerphone will work, I guess, huh?
Technical difficulties.
So what are, what are, it's just one thing that I can say.
Jackie, call the town office number.
I want the jokes down here. Well, they can say, say 301, land was omitted. So it looks like we're looking for, um, I think she can scroll now. So we're actually getting more taxes, so it's a good thing.
I was gonna call you on my, uh, on my iPhone, you wanna just...
There you go. Go ahead.
I don't need on my iPhone, on my iPad, do you? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we're good, we can hear you.
So we just... You're gonna explain the supplement.
Can you hear us?
I don't know if I should use...
You could just get rid of the Zoom and just do the phone.
Um...
We don't need to send it.
You have the floor Jackie.
Oh. Oh, I don't know if I work the floor. All right, I got, um, one abatement and two supplements. Uh, the supplement, um, that's for Geisel. Call number 2233 for $1,156.56.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe what happened, if I remember correctly, um...
Says land omitted.
Land omitted?
Yeah.
That's the...
They had sold land to somebody, uh, but they hadn't sold it all. And so they definitely got a bill and they, and they should've. So that was for the $1,156.56. And then the other supplement was same reason, uh, Chris Grant, for $301.46.
Mm-hmm.
And then I got a supplement for, uh, Sue McCaffrey.
You mean an abatement?
You mean an abatement.
I, I, yeah, you're right, an abatement, excuse me. Um, she had, uh, uh, Jim had, um, combined two of her parcels. She didn't want that to happen, so we devised them and they sent her a supplemental bill for, uh, for the new, uh, map and lot number that he filled through, abate her for that property that was still on the other bill. And that is for $1,190.64.
Okay, well, good, good thing, good thing he caught that. Thank you, thank you Jackie.
I think Suzette caught it actually, but, but, uh, anyway, so... So there we have it. About, about even.
Good. Should we send one thing around?
We are only gonna send one thing around.
Yeah. So, uh, I'll make a motion, we, uh, we accept the supplements and abatements from Jackie.
I have you written that.
All in favor?
He said it, he started to say it.
It was bad.
I might be into it.
Thank you Jackie.
Thanks Jackie, great job.
All right, thank you, that's it?
That's it.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye. She comes and works overtime here.
She does.
Yeah, I was here yesterday.
Well, why is... Not for something like that, because she's obviously gonna come when it's important. I need to work for a couple of towns, okay? Okay, I don't need to. Next, where are we? We approved, we approved the minutes, did you read my scribble? I put them in there.
Oh, yeah, 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 very good.
All right, so why don't we have the representative for the Legion? Hi.
Hi.
So you wanted to, to run by the, uh, we, uh, the cribbage?
Yes.
It has to be done annually or every five years or every certain many years?
It's an annual.
It's an annual.
It's right here, it's not in your packet, I came in today.
Okay, so...
Motion to sign the application and renewal for cribbage for the Legion. I'll second that.
All in favor? All right. The, the, so they, do they need the original? Does it need to be in blue?
I'm not sure, local license is there, so I just put the blue.
Okay.
Maureen, I'll, um, have the photocopy. I'll photocopy it for us tomorrow and you can pick it up tomorrow if you would like.
Oh.
If you want it at nine.
I'm already done with this tomorrow morning.
Oh, okay. I'll go get a copy then, right?
Yes.
Waste water treatment plan, ARPA funds request.
Yes, this is, uh... The ARPA funds that we have remaining, there's 105,000 things left. And one of the, uh, things that it can be used for is towards wastewater infrastructure. And there's been a request from the plant operator Bruce to consider using, uh, some of these funds towards raising, finding the manholes that have been paved over, over the years. It's gonna take an effort. Uh, we've got a quote from one entity. So he's, he's thinking around $50,000 to get that project. Nothing has to be decided right now, tonight on it, but I just wanted to kind of plant that seed.
Is that considered infrastructure?
Yes.
Or repair?
Infrastructure, yeah.
Why were they paved over?
The main DOT, it's all on Wa- Washington Street. From the pump station, actually, actually not just Washington Street, but, um...
Main Street.
Yeah, out by the Diamond Point Road. There's a pump station out there, it's from there all the way down Washington Street, down the Allstate Road, and then they paved it all decades ago.
So what do you mean, so it's what for?
Just, I don't know, you can, um, it's just a seed, like I said, I'm planting, you can mull it over, um, you can...
I don't know how much you have to mull, but my question would be if we do it, what happens the next time they come and pave? Are we like back in the same place again?
They have actually already notified us that they will be, they will be paving 189. And I responded, let them, you know, that they need to work with our wastewater crew and in the future, but they've already been paved over now, so.
Yeah.
I have a question then, if they're going to be doing it again and scraping and then replying if they did it in the first place, why are we using $50,000 we could do elsewhere with this money?
That's why we're not, that's not why, that's why we're not agreeing now.
But I'm just agreeing not to, yeah.
Well, they would, they won't uncover the manhole covers if they've been covered them since the last three times they paved, you know, like...
On the Main, Main Street, there's, there's not one manhole covered above. Usually when you pave a road, first thing you do is bring up...
Remember, we had to have that one lifted up by the, by the post office.
And it's gonna have to be lifted again.
Mm-hmm. Taking your, uh, whole thought of your car out.
That's not a manhole, that's storm gray.
Yeah, that whole corner, like, you can sit and watch people wreck their cars.
The one on, the one on...
The water, the water flow all over, you know, it is a mess.
Well, it's, uh, well, we'll consider that request, right.
When would they, when's that kind of work done? Like, when would they want the money?
Um...
I know soon.
I would say this, this, they're gonna be paid.
So like, we should put it on the agenda for next meeting? To like...
Well, we could, we could put it up, I mean, that kind of thing would have to go up with it.
Well, you want to give permission, at least put it up with it.
I think, well, I think it makes...
Let's see how much it's gonna cost.
When we do that.
And then, yeah, so at least we get the ball.
So I'll make a motion that, that we respect the idea suggested in regards to using the ARPA money, because that is appropriate, having gone through the training. And that we put out an, an RFP process to see if it's even enough money to consider doing it.
Do we have a second?
Sure.
All in favor? Section 23, small community grant program funding septic replacements.
Oh, this is a document, this is all, it could've gone over.
It was in the past.
But, uh, this is a document from SEC. Um, that needs to be signed by the select board for them to basically manage the money that the town was awarded for that community resilience grant.
Oh.
This is...
So we're gonna win Sunrise County accounts?
Right.
What's it gonna help?
That's not the septic grant?
Oh, sorry, no. No.
That's what we just asked about. Small community grant program.
You're taking that...
This is just an announcement that the small community grant program is available now, that the town couldn't apply for on behalf of people that might need their septic replaced.
And this grant... How did we find the last person that we resorted?
How did we fund?
How did we find the last person?
They came to the town.
So has anybody else come to the town about that septic?
No, not really.
Does anybody do, can we announce it somehow?
Well, we're trying to do it.
Yeah, we, I did have somebody, and at that time, it was before this announcement, actually the same day, I wonder if this prompted it. But I, I sent them to the state.
Okay.
And then I got the email that this was open.
So we need to sign a new thing now to be enrolled in this again? Or, or just announcements that the...
It's just an announcement, and then people come to the town with this or call me or whatever.
When's the deadline to apply?
There is none, that's what I know right now.
A rolling, a rolling one?
Yeah, there seems to be, there seems to be money up the wazoo on this. People come in piecemeal and they, they...
They were intended. Okay, now, now we're at the Sunrise County. So that would be for services, so what are they helping us with?
They're, they're actually helping the...
Is that comprehensive plan?
$47,000 we got? Comprehensive plan.
Well, they're giving mapping.
Forty-seven thousand dollars. Mapping, a GIA's mapping.
They have in there, I think it's 12,000 for mapping, 29 for salary, and like six or seven thousand for publication and an announcement or something.
So they're taking the whole 47,000?
They are.
And updating the, the emergency plan?
Yeah, they're doing a lot of good things, I think they really are.
What they're doing?
They're, um, they're gonna deal with the, um, they're gonna do mapping around the water for, um, uh, emergency as well as high water. Like, they're gonna remap all that stuff. On page two of four, they kind of outline all the mapping that they're gonna do in conjunction with the University of Maine. Um, and that's all good stuff for the, um...
Oh, this is great, mapping deserved lands and the fact that they're... To determine what percentage of land in the community is currently in conservation. I'd really like to know that.
Me too.
So yes, yes. So would, I'd like to make a motion to like this...
And I'm mistaken, it, it seems to me, a long time ago when I was on the planning board, Jim Clark did this very same thing. Right?
Yes.
So why are we doing this again?
Because that's old.
That's old?
Very.
Land has shifted.
Because the water has changed.
Water has changed.
So...
We are going to be doing this again after this. Next time we get somebody else for money for the climate change, we better give them some.
So I'll make a motion, we sign the agreement?
Awesome.
All in favor? And thank you very much for doing this, Sunrise County. And is this the original that we got signed here?
At, at the risk of sounding a bit, um, snippy about this, have you ever done a comparison of what we're paying at Sunrise County as to what we used to pay Washington County Council of Governments? We're doing the same thing.
I'm not sure.
I think the mapping was done from, for university students. When we had any mapping done last time, they helped us with the Maureen Field and stuff.
Yeah.
But that was, I don't think that was, I don't know if they were paying...
It depends on whether we went through Washington County Council of Governments or we went straight to the, the university.
Well, they're doing a, um, a lot of different things in there. And were, were they not the ones that applied for that?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
So I think they probably deserve to, to the work.
No, I, being somebody on the comprehensive plan, it'll be marvelous to have an outside agency to do that research around all those, the mapping and, and, you know, uh...
Oh, yeah.
Latest statistics on labor and, uh, it'd be great.
So we did the other business. You made, you made an update?
Oh, it's just an abatement.
What was this? Oh, I skipped over the Lubec School Sewer Bill Abatement. But it's not actually, we don't have people who have to work on it.
Yeah, back and forth.
So from what I understand, they have a leak, which arrived, arose in a very large bill. And they're requesting an abatement.
Two bills.
Two different bills. And the normal, the normal amount of the bill is usually around $279.
Well, they sent us, they sent us their history last, they also... So you can see...
In your packet.
They, they had the same problem, uh, in 2013, because they had a couple thousand dollar ones.
Did they get an abatement?
Uh, it doesn't say, it's just, it's just looking at the list of what their charges were.
Okay.
So I mean, they must've had a leak in 2013 too.
These are the normal readings, this is, you know, these are the astronomical readings.
Okay, so this is all 100, 200, 100, and then all of a sudden it's 1700?
Right, right, they did that in 2013.
Six of these were missed, these are no reads. Well, then, don't they have to have the 200 each time, you know?
Now they get the minimum, but there's a no read, and when there's zero.
Why did they read it?
Now, it's my understanding that the water company gave them the, the abatement on there end, correct?
No, because, well, I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, they gave it to them on there end. I'll make a motion, we grant the abatement.
Charles, second it. I mean, what are we gonna do?
It's all taxpayer money, you know, you...
Yeah, right.
All in favor? Gotta fix the leaks, they've got enough problems right now down there, I'd say. That, and now we have other business, which we did.
I have something for other business, and it follows in the school piece, just...
You have other business?
Just, just on the school piece, because like, you know, I've been attending the school board meetings, and I just want to make sure that we're aware, and I kind of mentioned it at the last meeting, because two of the people here are on budget committee, that like the school budget is gonna be a very big challenge issue.
I did read that article.
They are hundreds of thousands of dollars behind with the general fund that doesn't support the need. And they have, uh, a projected bill to fix the roof and stuff of hundreds of thousands of dollars that more than likely, they are gonna, you need this one, but they are gonna need to go for a loan or something. So I just, I think it would be prudent to have a conversation with them, you know, around the money piece. Because like you said, it's all, although they are an RSU and they can do it all independently and they are not part of our budget, I understand that.
Well, we do have a budget to manage.
Right, there are issue is the Lubec residents. So it is gonna be the taxpayers that have to deal with our budget, their budget, and the county budget. And our assessments have now, you know, we are not 177 million dollar town anymore, we're 188 million dollar town now, so like, you know, our valuation's...
It's moving up.
And then up, they went up to this year. So our tax, you know, so anyway, I just think we need to be aware of the school piece and then...
Well, there's three people in the budget committee that actually attend a school budget. It's supposed to attend a school budget. We actually have a budget committee.
Committee, but they, but like...
We are obviously all part of the budget.
But they didn't meet with the school last year, and my understanding is that years ago, the budget committee used to meet with the school.
Yes, we always did, it did. It's been years back, it didn't last year?
Not really, you know, that I would just, I would just encourage us to make sure we're involved in the conversation.
Take a look in the town charter and see what it says about the obligations of the budget committee.
They have to oversee the school budget.
Yeah, they are supposed to.
They're not supposed to, they're supposed to audit what the town does.
They're supposed to grab the man in the school board.
But the school board, the budget committee was at school board meetings last year.
That's what I thought.
They have done, but they're not required to.
They were.
No, they're not required, but I just, I just...
Your charter doesn't say that, go back and look.
What you say to it is, it's supposed to be a cooperation between the two.
Absolutely.
I've already read it 10 times, Renato, I'm impressed with your memories.
Years ago, we used to do it right up here.
Right.
The school would come up here and we'd remember that, it was just a couple of years.
I mean, I don't, I, I don't wanna, I don't have to do without doing a written reduction. How you saying that?
You raise your hand.
I'm putting this over, I'm getting up, I'm putting this with my hands, because it's one of the other...
Looks like the abandoned mud.
Oh, come on.
Do you wanna leave?
They even leave at the State of the Union. I know, I'd like, I'd like the buds to...
Well, I, and I don't wanna make a big deal out of it, but I'd wanna make sure we're all aware of it, and then that...
Well, if we read the Quadi tights, we're all around.
And then our budget, and then I don't know what we can do about it, really. You know, and I mean, like, I don't, I don't...
All right, here we go. Are you ready? Section 5.02, Budget Committee. In addition to articles in the town warrant for the election of officials required in the charter, there shall be an article for the election of the Committee of Citizens as specified in section 3.03, to be known as the Budget Committee. Three members from the public at large to be elected to staggered three-year terms. The Budget Committee shall make recommendations to the town on proposed expenditures and aid the municipal officers in determining recommended expenditures. In addition, the Budget Committee shall make recommendations to the School Board of Directors on proposed expenditures and aid the School Board of Directors in determining recommended expenditure. There we go. I know I've read that before.
If you look at the warrant for the town business meeting, every article says, "Select Board recommends, Budget Committee recommends."
Yes.
If you look at the warrant for the school committee meeting, it doesn't have that.
No, it doesn't, but that has nothing, that's, we can't do anything, what can we do about that?
Well, then the Budget Committee has to say, um, what is recommended?
Just because they're not there and the warrant doesn't necessarily mean...
I'm not arguing that they shouldn't do that.
Right. But this is, this is like the Bible of the, of the town.
Right.
Town charter, unless it's changed by all of the people.
Right.
So...
I just, I just wanted to be sure that, you know, everybody is aware that, uh, was it Denise on the West Virginia? Of what's coming down the pipe? It's Martha, Denise, and Gina.
Did you go to the school board budget meeting?
I don't think we went to all of them, but we went to a lot.
Yes, a lot. Well, nobody...
So we didn't have a lot of input, we were like members of the public, sitting in the audience. We didn't have a lot of, we weren't part of what was happening.
And you said something. And, and I don't know, and maybe you can answer, I have no idea if the school board is meeting with Mr. Johnson Prior, that he presents to you his proposal. I mean, you know, I know how the school board budget went last time, it's two meetings before the school board meeting for two months, and then it's the general public in June. And I'm just curious, when's the conversation about where are you gonna make up this money?
The way it works is that two meetings, there was two members of the Budget Committee at all three meetings.
Yep, I was at, I, I...
On the third one is, yes, on the third one is just prior to the vote.
Right, but the first...
There's two working, there's two working sessions prior to that.
Is that all there is?
And that's, is that, well, we used to meet, as, uh, the select board did have meetings with the school board on the budget, at least some of the...
And I'm talking like before Mr. Johnson, whatever he's preparing to give you guys at the first meeting, before those figures happened, when are you having a conversation with them? Or what, you know, or, or is there not any plan for that?
There is no plan, but, I mean, there's, the only plan is gonna be, is that it's not coming meeting in March, is stop throwing out figures of what we think is going to be needed for budget time. If there's going to be anything that is going to be proposed and be added for separate from what we're dealing with, for problems with the school.
And why is that new?
First Thursday in March.
First Thursday in March. And then I know that, I know that there's two meetings coming up prior to the, uh, the vote that the Budget Committee will be invited to.
Okay, good.
Okay, I just...
Well, no, it's that, I'm sure the school is very aware of that it's Lubec taxpayers, and, and he's always there before the, the vote to answer questions.
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna have to find, find the money somehow. I mean, you can't have a, pull out, you know, a roof that's pretty bad. We saw it.
I, I would like to point out, there are three separate occasions that the superintendent, and this goes back very recently, and as far back as two years ago, has made the comment that as an RSU, you are your own fiscal agent.
Well, what, they can't be running as all three things at once, can you?
They are, the school is their own fiscal agent.
Well, they're all three, but can't, don't you have to designate of which rule you're abiding by? Especially if there's, if they're conflictual.
To be perfectly honest, it doesn't make a whole big bunch of difference, because they're an RSU, which is a regional school unit, and at the time when they were an RSU, Treskic was still part of the enrollment, so it was two towns, so it was like all those households into that budget. When the consolidation law came in and they became part of the other... When the consolidation law came in and they became part of the other...
SAG?
A, AOS, which is another organized system, um...
Alternative organized structure.
Alternative organized system. Um, they became part of that, which basically they share a superintendent and the office for payroll. That is really it. And then all the towns are their own independent school. Some of the towns, however, are not RSU, so they are part of their town budget. So the school is in the municipal budget. We are not.
Lubeck is the only one.
Right, so, but, but being in RSU, they don't get to just take out loans without going to their constituents, which are the people of Lubeck, because they're no longer trusted. So, I mean, it's still, it's still the taxpayers in Lubeck that are gonna have to, um, face the dilemma of less money from the Department of Education, the challenges of like...
So they can make out loans, you're saying?
When they signed the contract for the new boiler, was that two and a half years ago now? That was done without any input from the town.
But they didn't have to take any money. They were using, they were using already funds they had.
They were using Esra funds from the federal government.
Right, right.
And there's questions as to whether that was a completely appropriate. And they were using money out of what they called the Fund Balance Floor.
Which, which seems to me that when taxpayer money's being spent, they have illegal...
Well, they have a, they have a, they have a public meeting, we all voted in the budget. They, we had that meeting in June and we approved their budget, you know, just like all the other budgets. So I mean, you know, they had, we approved that movement of general fund to support this year's budget as the people that approved their budget, all of that is there. But the challenge becomes this year is their general fund is short, audit does not look promising that it's gonna be real big, and they are, you know, a hundred thousand dollars less from the state, and they are a hundred thousand dollars more because valuation went up and enrollments went down. So there's just like a real plus, whatever insurance isn't covering on the building is gonna have to be paid.
Yeah, but that has no bearing on what you're trying to talk about.
Well, it does, because it's money out of our pocket.
No, it doesn't, because there is absolutely no way that you can educate these kids and take the money from what's supposed to be the building affair. Two separate, it's two separate things. The two hundred thousand dollars that subsidies are, it's not to deal with fixing the building.
Oh, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that as a budget for this...
It can't even be put in one part, because you can't put it one part and have it so that we're gonna say, okay, the school needs three quarters of a million dollars just to run the way they're running to fix the building. It's two parts, it's got to be two parts, because if not, we're gonna be cutting the system for the kids down there.
That's right.
But, but where's the second, but where's the second pie come from?
Well, we don't know what, we're, we're waiting for the audit. The audit is overdue.
That's true.
We're told that because of the LC, LC, um, lease, that they have to audit that too. That's what we've been told. But until we get the audit, we don't know what the value is of the Fund Balance Floor.
Right, but he didn't predict it to be hundreds of thousands, which is what's needed, you know?
Just two years ago, it was on the order of six hundred thousand.
Right, but they spent three hundred something thousand on, on the one thing.
Anyway, I just, you know, I just don't... It's probably, um, seeing as the select board represents the taxpayers, I think it was a good point, but they will have time to give input on, on the day of the budget being passed.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be...
There's gonna have some general meetings, aren't you not?
There's gonna be a paper brought up well before that.
So it's good that you brought up that point.
Yep, but that was my other goal.
Do we have any committee, committee update?
Uh, Dr. Bucy, no, except Kenny, I got Kenny all excited about pulverizing glass and putting it on shore to build up a kind of rip raft with pulverized glass.
Oh.
Yeah. And, um, in terms of broadband, we have Martha here. Would you like to bring us up to date on that?
Sure. We had a brief meeting yesterday of just the committee. Um, the, the first question was, are we moving forward or are we not moving forward? Having been declined for this initial grant. Um, all committee members said, sure, we're moving forward. How we're going to do that is up for grabs. We're, we are going to explore options. Um, there is another grant round. Second grant, same as the first grant round, pretty, yeah, maybe, pretty similar. The, uh, the main connectivity authority is looking at any tweaks they need to do to their requirements between now and then. There are meetings that we will attend in March to learn more. And sometime in March, they'll tell us when that grant process will happen. We are hoping that it will happen early June, so that it will happen before the end of the fiscal year, which means that we can ride on the same vote, because we would be going for the same thing uh, as we did in the first round. If that does not happen, then we will have to come back to the town. Or if we decide to do some other thing, we've talked about if this doesn't work, what else can we do? Can we do it in pieces? Can we do it with a different partner? We got to explore all that, and we intend to do so.
I think that since the interest rates have nearly tripled since the time that you gave the facts and figures of the loan part, if you've gotten the grant, probably needs to be presented to the town again. It's not gonna be the same price.
So...
There's no way you're gonna get a loan from any bank at the same interest rate you assumed you were gonna get last year. It went from three and a half to seven, or it might even be seven and a half now.
Good point. We will look at that. One of our questions was whether we would have to come back to the town before we could go to the grant. However, that would mean a special town meeting if we're gonna go to the grant.
Although it, it flows into summer and the annual town meeting is in August, so I don't...
Right, depends on what they pick them up with, and they're really...
I mean, it's open. And us thinking a new proposal to the town would be appropriate.
It was a little disappointing, because we were really like, um, happy with the idea of... But that was the best of all worlds. Being able to offer everybody in town internet at a hundred over a hundred for a really reasonable price, you know what I mean, and maybe generate some revenue for the town and the owners. And that was the complication, being the, the town wanting to own it in regards to some of the grant stuff, that they have to re-tweak, because they talked about doing it, but then gave no points in the, yeah, anyway.
I just know...
Yep, I don't know where we're going with it.
On a, on a personal level, then I have a hundred thousand dollar loan that went from three fifty a month to seven hundred in interest for three months. So I, I just thought to myself, it's, that's fine, I'm dealing with that, but what figures you gave for the payback is not gonna be the same, it's gonna be double the amount of money. So you really have to redo the figures.
In either, either case, before we spend any money, the taxpayers, it's their money.
It's their money, yeah.
By eyes, they have to approve whatever we do.
And I think it has to be reworked.
Yeah.
Well, we don't even know if it's gonna be the same, you know, you know what I mean? We'll know in March.
And, and the bottom line is...
We know where in March we're gonna be going for.
Yeah, and if we, if everybody's on a roll, yeah. June, right? June, we have, so you'll have to re...
Yeah, we'll think.
I mean, there's a whole lot of maybes.
Yep, a whole lot of maybes.
Sorry you didn't get the grant.
There's a lot, a lot of, the, the people that were meeting...
It's really a letdown, yeah.
Yeah, the people that were meeting with monthly, we were like, there's six or seven other folks who didn't get the grant, and, and the explanations, they weren't really helpful. They didn't give you anything like to change or do better, you know, because it was all good, but like, you still didn't get the grant, so, you know.
Well, some towns, we're better off than some. Some towns we're told, you will not get a grant. After putting in years of work.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're better than some.
And, and really, the bottom line here is that, um, we were promised by the governor, we were promised by the senators, we were promised by a lot of people. Everyone in this state is gonna have broadband. They committed to it.
Oh, she said it again last night.
Yeah, so, let's hold them to it, put their feet to the fire.
Without taxpayer dollars.
Yeah, show us the money.
Yeah, and how it's, how it's...
They're hundred years from now.
Yeah, well, no, they'll just continue to get the grants to like Consolidated or Spectrum, who are a for-profit business that can do it, because that's who got some of those grant dollars, you know, so it just is gonna make it harder for some of that smaller stuff to happen.
There's a crackmire going on right now between Spectrum Consolidated politicians and the average person.
And they have bigger lobbyists than the towns that are trying to do it on the road, is really what it...
We're learning a lot from both the Maine Broadband Coalition.
Yeah.